Okay, motion to adjutant agenda.
I make the motion to adjutant agenda.
Motion, maybe, have a favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, consent agenda. Motion, uh, action approving consent agenda items. One hundred minutes.
Yeah, it's just a minute. Aileen is A-I-L-E-N.
Hold on for me.
It's on the second to last paragraph. End of comments on the last one.
Perfect, Mark, yes.
Yeah.
There was another name that I... Doc, I have that.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Motion, maybe, second, have a favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, okay, our guest speakers. Um, Michael Ramona Winters, local citizens patrol.
Present.
Please stand and state your name for the recorder, please.
Yes, my name is Michael Winters.
And I'm Ramona Winters.
Okay, uh, my wife and I have been living here in Lakeview now for twelve years. Previously, we lived in Alaska for... I lived thirty-eight years in Alaska, she lived twenty-six in Alaska. And I gave you each a packet that... I'll let you read through that, whatever is relevant to you. Fine, I'm gonna try and keep this short. We are considering developing and deploying the citizens patrol in the greater Lakeview area, but mainly responding to city limits, uh, but go wherever, wherever we're needed. I was a president of a Juno citizens patrol in Juno, Alaska, for six years. I was a member of that patrol for eleven years. I, uh, I worked with the Juno Police Department as a training consultant. I trained and consulted with their SWAT team. As a member of the, of the citizens patrol, we, uh, we patrolled in our own vehicles. We patrolled mainly at night, in pairs, and there was no confronting or approaching citizens. If we observed suspicious or criminal activity, criminal activity was reported immediately to the police. Suspicious activity was, uh, reported in a, in a report that we turned in later, uh, when our shift was completed.
I participated in this program with him. I was also a member of the citizens patrol for the same amount of time.
Correct. Uh, what the citizens patrol will not be is an enforcement arm of any law enforcement agency. We've already been in contact with the, the chief of police, the sheriff, and Sergeant Yates with the state troopers. We've had sit-down meetings with them. I met with the county commissioners last week to, as a, as a courtesy also to them to let them know what's going on. We are going to, uh, we're gonna make sure that our people that we train are trained to observe and report only. There will be no guns allowed. If a person is in a position where they think they're at risk, lock your doors and you drive away and report it to the police. Anyone who violates that procedure or policy is done. As soon as we discover that it's been done, they will be done.
Um, this is also an all-volunteer group. There's nothing in it for anybody. They'll be using their own vehicle, their own gas, so they, what they get out of it is they give something to that community.
Correct.
Um, it's not anything for any, it's, it should be completely anonymous, and that's what it was up there, and that's our goal, is to be anonymous to the public. You know, law enforcement will know if we're on the road, we'll let them know when we go on shift and what vehicle we're driving. We don't want to become suspicious. We don't want to be the one everyone's calling in. We just want to be able to be out there and observe stuff and report it, and like he said, if it's criminal activity, it'd be an immediate report. If it's suspicious activity, go on a log that's turned in and they can use that as the place.
Right. As, uh, within an extra day or two, all three law enforcement agencies, or we're gonna sit down and we're gonna iron out all the little bugs that we've already discovered, because we need to, we need to organize this to the specific needs of this community, not Juno, Alaska. But we can give, we can give a, a basic, uh, fundamental aspect to it. So, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer questions.
I guess the other thing that we need to say is we aren't looking for an endorsement or any kind of a, you know, to be sanctioned as an organization. We're just being informative to let you guys know what we're planning to do, so that when you hear or see it, you've at least seen what the deal is.
Also, the, there will be little to no resources asked of the, of the town, of the county, or the state, with the exception of, uh, some periodic training to keep everybody on the same page.
I guess, I guess, you know, I like the idea. We do, 'cause years ago, they had something like that here. Everybody had, that's when the CB radios were real popular, so... But, uh, the thing that, that bothers me is some people do get excited, you know, and will go and interact. So, my, my thing is that you need to really stress every time they go out, do not interact, because, uh, you know, then you're putting the people on liability and at risk. And, um, you know, I would like to keep the council and, and the city informed of everything going on and stuff, and so we, we know what's going on out there.
Right. And what we did in Juno is, is monthly, I would sit down with the Juno Police Department and the Alaska State Troopers. We'd have a meeting. I'd present them with a report of our activities for the previous month and go over it. And they, they tapped us quite frequently for our suspicious activity reports. Uh, they'd get calls about something that happened, and, and they would call me or one of my representatives to get that information. Uh, what, what I'm going to propose at our next meeting with the law enforcement agencies is that we're going to activate a, uh, an email account that we, that I will put the suspicious activity board reports into, that they'll have access to.
Another, another thing, too, is, uh, have notebooks.
Yes, yeah, oh, we have a patrol log.
Okay.
And they're required to enter something hourly in a patrol log, or...
And the other part of the training is if you're gonna write down a suspicious activity, you need to be willing to testify to that, so that if law enforcement says, hey, that's, there's a description of the person who possibly did that, then that person, if they write it down, needs to be willing to testify. That's what they're, we're there for.
Right.
Um, it got to be, in Juno, it got to be pretty good that if, if the citizen patrol witnessed something and it ended up going to court, which a lot of things did go to court later, um, when the, when the attorney saw that there was a citizen patrol eyewitness, they would usually just plead out at that point. Um, I think we testified, he testified once. I think everything I was involved with was pled out before I ever got to court, and it was, it was a good deal.
Counsel, do you have any questions?
Uh, do you act as though you're, you're moving forward with or without the graces of the different entities?
We've talked to the different entities. We've, I mean, we were presenting this to you, we, before we ever talked to the, um, the commissioners, we talked to, um, the sheriff, the chief of police, and Sergeant Yates, because we wanted to make sure that they were okay with that feedback, and, and like they said, kind of the same thing, we, they didn't want to necessarily endorse something like that, but they aren't opposed to it, that they want to work together. And we had intended to move forward, but we wanted to make sure that if there's any problems, people know who to go to, and we can work together on those problems.
I noticed you're proposing to be an organization of 501(c)(3), and what is the official title of the organization?
Well, we haven't...
That is a concern, too, because if it's, you know, it's like...
We have, we have not, we haven't landed on a specific name yet.
We don't have members at this point. We wanted to make sure that we let everybody know and that everybody knew what page we were on before we went forward and started asking for volunteers.
Do you think there's a need for working with the organizations, or at least, I, I mean, if you, if you put Lakeview on there, it's gonna be the town of Lakeview, whether you're anything to do with us or not. If you put Lake County on there, it's gonna be tied to the county government, the state. You know, I, I don't know that concern.
Right, and we will, we'll discuss that and come up with something, and, and I appreciate that feedback, because that's something I hadn't thought about.
Well, I, I think, as I said, I mean, you've got some very good ideas in here. I certainly endorse a lot of the ideas, but I just think that with an organization out there that is presenting themselves as such, uh, it's gonna be misinterpreted a lot of different times.
It doesn't necessarily have to have Lakeview or Lake County attached to the name.
No, I'm not trying to swear to that either. I just, I think you, you need to perhaps have a little more meeting with the governmental entities and see if something could come up a little further with an overall agreement to where it could be a working relationship more so than just a private organization doing their own thing.
And that's part of the reason that we wanted to be here, and that we wanted to meet with the different...
Well, I appreciate you coming forward.
Immunity seems to be the most word for us lately. You might think about community citizens, something like that, so it becomes a little broader.
Yeah, I have a whole list of names to, to rattle around in my brain.
I do have a question. Uh, what about liability insurance for the people that volunteer?
See, this came up with the sheriff. Uh, since they, since the people sign a volunteer agreement, we're not required to have, in Stairwater, we're not all required to have liability insurance, because they are operating on their own, and with guidance and training from law enforcement and from us.
And the other comment I would like to make is, when you meet with the other entities, I would like to be there for the town representative piece of it, you know, check with our legal counsel and everything, so if you could include me in that, it'd be really hard.
Right.
I'm gonna grab a paper for you. You gotta use binoculars, though. You can hardly see my name on it, but, yeah.
Okay, anything else on this?
Okay, I wanna try and make sure it's...
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, charter communications update. Let's see, they moved channel four to channel one-eighty-one. That's about the only thing I can see there.
Yeah.
Okay. We have a letter from the OCP. The day days coming up on June twenty-fourth. Then, we also have a letter here from Dolores Benson regarding the tree. Um, what I read here is the people that's living in that house where that tree is at own the tree, but, um, she's concerned they're not, uh, really appreciate the tree. I don't know, but I know those people, and, and I can't see, I can go talk to them and find out, um, what their plans are, but that, I don't know why that really pertains to us, except for asking us to help preserve that tree, which I will go and talk to them and see what can come up with.
Well, and Jeff went and looked at it, and I don't believe it's a sequoia tree.
Yeah, I think this is, in addition to several letters that she's written over the past couple of years, she'd like to see that turned into a park up there, but it's not our property.
Yeah.
It's not a great place for a park, and it's just not really reasonable. It's on private property, and I think they've asked her actually not to continue to come up there. Uh, she's got it listed here as a sequoia. I don't think it's a sequoia tree. Um, I, I think it's, you know, the homeowners, the landowners, uh, responsibility, and I don't think they, you know, I don't think it's a, it's a real issue.
Okay. Now, we'll move on to the public comment period. Do we have anybody with public comments?
Oh, I do have an issue I'd like to resolve.
I'd love to be resolved, but you have...
Um, well, I think that...
Let us know.
The facts will present themselves. I gave Roberta some copies. My neighbor recently, um, made a claim that I've blocked a local alley, and there's no alley. It's been a shared driveway with him and his neighbor on the other side of the fence, and at one time, there was a chain across the alley for like the last forty years, so it's never really been open to the public. And I'm just renting the property, but the plot plan shows that very clearly that the landowner owns all of that property, and there is no alley there. So I resolved those issues maybe five or six years ago, built the fence, and then this just recently come up. So I wanted to make sure that you guys knew what was going on, and then we had it all clear.
Was it, was it the alley that's also next to Rosales's house there that he has?
Yeah, when, yeah, between Carter's house and Rosales's.
Right.
And right now, Staub has bought that property, tore down the house, hauled it in there, and he's putting a part in one in there. He may have other future plans, I'm not really aware of, but there's been a lot of traffic down that driveway. And Rosales pretty much just allowed Carters to use that, because their access to their house was on the backside, their garage door and everything, and they wouldn't be able to have access if he would have built his fence on his property line. So, they prefer to call that an alley, and they could disconnect the chain and drive through it one time, but it's been quite, quite a while ago. So I think really his issue is with Staub and the access to that driveway, because there's a lot of traffic down there right now, and I'm not sure how it's going to be dealt with, but...
It looks like all of the streets have... I mean, there, it looks like all the, the parcels there have street access.
Yeah.
From both sides? So it's not blocking access to any property?
Not blocking, no, not, not anything at all. So anyway, it's just pretty simple. I think you've explained it. It's really obvious on these diagrams where the alleys are existing alleys.
Well, I appreciate you bringing one that I can read.
I did bring a little expanded one.
That's me trying to look, but it's like, whoa.
Well, are they wanting to, uh, stop that from being a drive-through in there?
Right.
Is that what you're asking?
Well, I just don't want to tear down my fence. Like I say, we solved my issues, Rosales brought it up, he wants a fence out of there. About a week ago, his renters blocked that driveway with their van for a couple of days, and I don't know the whole story, but then the van was moved, and that's when Rosales said, well, or somebody said, we can't block it on that side. They made him move the van, and then Rosales says, well, how come you can block the alley over here, but I can't block it here? But it's not an alley. So I think that Staub thinks that maybe they have the right to go through there, since they've been allowing, using that as a shared driveway for all these years.
Okay, yeah. What I'm looking at here on this map is it really doesn't show property lines. I mean, it's like if somebody still owns half of that alley down there, or so-called alley.
You know, when I originally built the fence, I measured it up with my tape measure, and I didn't have exact, you know, reference to his property line, but I originally assumed that he owned down the middle of the alley. But if you look at this plot plan I brought in today, it appears that his lot goes put over to where the edge of that house was built. So it's not really clear in that department, but that's all, doesn't involve me at all on that side of the fence. It is pretty terrible if my fence was down and people drove through there all the time down my private driveway, you know, living next to it.
The drive is, if you're speaking of, is right behind Altra's Chevron?
Yeah, it's right behind the Chevron.
Runs directly behind the restrooms there.
Yeah, I've got a garage in front of my house, and then I've got a shop back in the end, and that's a driveway to the shop.
Uh-huh, okay, and that's what's been utilized as a shared drive, or they, well, that it should be?
Actually, actually, it's the other half of the block, but if you go straight, straight west of there, the shared driveway comes in off of H Street and goes into the property that's now a parking lot. It used to come in the back of the house, it was garage back there a few days. And I think maybe Staub thinks that he still, I don't even know that he has an issue in this. Yeah, I don't, you know, I think...
You know, with the, with the current parcels being sold there and everything, I would think there's some pretty good flats over at the courthouse.
And I'm gonna follow up and just make sure that he moves that up.
Yeah.
I tried to communicate with Rosales and discuss this with him and help him do this, but he refuses to talk to me about it.
Now, there should be some survey stakes, I would think, current survey stakes, I would think, with the recent sale.
I did find one on the corner of my property before I built the fence, and I measured it all out. The new fence is totally on my landlord's property. However, Rosales does still think he owns that fence, it's on his property, according to him. And I've been maintaining it for the last fifteen years since I lived in there. It seems like they would say thank you instead of, whoa, we own it! So, so anyway, I think that it's pretty clear. So, thanks very much.
Thanks for coming forward.
Thanks, Pat.
All right.
I don't think I'll sit around for the rest of this.
Okay, now we're going to, uh, any old business. Hearing none? My resolution, amendment number three, on the CDVD grant for Head Start, extension of completion time, which is resolution nine-hundred. This is supposed to be extended through November, later November ninth, when they're supposed to be done with that down there.
Man, what, what date were they reviewing on? Do we have that?
Maybe, but I think there might have been...
So by moving it now this far back, the intention must not be to start school there this fall?
I think they're planning on it, and went a little bit longer just to make sure everything got done.
What has to be done still? Why the extension?
I know they haven't finished up, they haven't totally had the geogramming information worked out. Uh, they, they're, they have a lot of internal, in the, in the building, things to work out, and a meeting tomorrow, right?
Yeah, they were, they were supposed to have a startup on the geothermal system tomorrow, but I got word today that it's not ready for that.
So...
They are gonna, the engineers are gonna be there, the contractor's gonna be there, but it's not gonna get started out.
And we have a meeting, I believe it's next week, on with the...
Are they supposed to put a sidewalk or something around too?
Yeah.
Yeah, put a sidewalk.
They have a lot left to do, so, but I, I think they plan on, you know, having an open block, but this just gives us to make sure.
It's gonna be really inconvenient for everybody if they don't have it.
Well, I'm just starting to point statements so long.
Well, I'll tell you for one thing, everything they've tried to do has come back twenty, thirty, or more percent higher than what they were originally told, and so, and then, then there's been like, did they originally have the sidewalk planned in there?
It was not.
Yeah, see, I mean, then it's like, all of a sudden, now they have to have this fence that this is there. Now they have to have this thing here. Now this has to be done. So there's been, I know a lot of things that have been added to the, the plan, and, oh no, well, this is a, this is a requirement, you know, nobody told you about. So I know that's been an issue, so maybe that's trying to satisfy all the different regulatory agencies and, I know, it's not fun.
Yeah, I, I certainly hope that they move quickly and, or finish by the end of summer so that we can get going on that stuff. If possible, but however, um, I think, you know, there's no reason not to approve this if they can't get the work done on time, according to the original contract. And, um, so I, I moved to approve resolution number nine-hundred in the matter of this CDVD grant, Head Start Amendment number three.
I'll second that.
Moves in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Uh, Bill Harland in Public Health. Okay, we'll move on to Deanna Wells and Elizabeth Chrisley, zoning restrictions regarding the cannabis dispensary.
Yes, um, Deanna couldn't beat her. She had family coming in today, so it's just Elizabeth Chrisley. Um, uh, I'll try and be very brief about a rather complex, uh, topic. We haven't seen this in Lakeview, but there are many reputable business people who have successfully worked with the OLCC to provide discreet dispensaries in Oregon communities. And I have one such friend who has dispensaries that started as medical dispensaries in the Portland area, and has now transitioned to OLCC-regulated commercial dispensaries. And, um, I met him through my association with the medical cannabis community, of which I've been a part for over a dozen years personally. Um, we were having a discussion, and I was saying, well, I really, I would personally stop gardening myself, but we don't have a dispensary nearby, and I don't like to travel. And he asked me, well, how far do you have to travel? And I said, I have to go two and a half to three hours. My husband would say two and a half, I drive slower. Three hours, uh, to a dispensary, and that's why I maintain growing. And I said, but our community, our town has made allowances for this to occur, it just hasn't happened yet. And he said, well, I'll do it. And I said, well, what? And he said, well, that's what I do, I can do that. I'm, you know, if you find a building, I'm interested, you know, I can do this, and I'm interested even in a rehab building. And I didn't say that about everything in rehab, but, um, so that day, I went to Seroptimus and I talked to Deanna, and she said, oh, I have the perfect building. And she showed me what is now, it was formerly the stationary store called The Shop. And we went in there and we looked at it, and while they had a new roof, pretty much everything, well, I mean, it's got good bones, but it... but it, it needs money thrown at it if it's going to be saved from basically imminent ruin. That's the way it is.
Excuse me a minute, are you talking about the old?
The thrift store?
Thrift store.
Mm-hmm, next to the Eagles Lodge, that's right. And we, we thought it was a perfect situation. And Deanna thought it met all the criteria set forth by the town council. And it's next to an already regulated facility that's regulated by the OLCC, the Eagles Lodge. And we really liked that it was near the sheriff's. We liked that added security and that it was kind of tucked away, you know, not just there in the middle. And, but I called Dawn to make sure that it met all the, the, no, it wasn't you, it was.
It wasn't Amy.
It was the, Amy, it was Amy. And, and it did, met everything except that it's within a thousand feet, as the crow flies, of the pool park. And Deanna hadn't realized that that's that situation. And she said, well, that basically is everything that, I mean, we have also regulated that everything, that it be in the downtown area, in the kind of central district. So we thought we should approach. And so today, even though I have no vested interest other than just being a medical patient, I want to talk to the council about possibly rezoning this specific building for use as a dispensary. Or if not that, looking at what is available and designating a spot that could be used, because no one wants to work against the council's wishes. Let's, no one wants to try and do something that y'all don't want done. So I would like to talk to you about rezoning this commercial, the rezoning for a commercial dispensary, but I'd like to talk about the impact of not having a dispensary and how that affects the medical patients in this community. I personally, I'm a Desert Storm veteran. I was exposed to mustard and sarin gas during Desert Storm and I obtained a spinal injury. So I had to have two surgeries after the war. And I deal with necropathy and nerve pain from that and, and exposure to the sarin and mustard gas. And so that's how I ended up finding medical cannabis to not be, lead in life addicted to opioids. And my husband was in a catastrophic car accident and had 31 surgeries to put him back together again after this car accident where he was in a coma and had a traumatic brain injury. And so we had, had found this. And like I say, we've been in medical, with medical cannabis for over a dozen years. At the time, there were no dispensaries in Oregon. And you had to become kind of prey to this grower culture where they, they kind of use patients to shield their black market activity. And that's the best way I can describe it. So we quickly found out that that was a scam and you're being preyed upon. And we became gardeners ourselves. But not everyone can grow a garden. When we moved here, I want to share with you a couple of kind of anonymous stories. I had a friend who was a retired federal agent here and his name was Patrick. And he used to take my son fishing up at Blue Lake and hooked his first fish and let him pull it in and really got him addicted to fishing. But about seven years ago, he got a brain tumor. And he knew that we were, there were no dispensaries in Oregon at that time. And he knew that we were medical cannabis patients. And he came and talked to us about how the program works. And we told him how he goes to your doctor and how you get a card. But within 60 days, he had already died from, I'm sorry. He had already died from the tumor. And he never got a chance to try cannabis in the amounts and in the concentrations that he had, that will affect. And now we're finding out that they actually reversed the growth of this specific type of tumor that he did have. So there's that kind of story that happens here in Lakeview. And also I have a personal friend whose husband recently died of Parkinson's disease. And he, I found out in the days before he died that they had approached the, as their doctors, and they had tried Marinol, but that's all they had access to. And if you know anything about Marinol, you know that it doesn't work. And in fact, there, while there have been no deaths attributed to cannabis ever in the history of man, there have been deaths attributed to the chemical derivatives that are, are used to kind of isolate the elements of cannabis, like spice. And those, those are, that's where the deaths occur. But God got it right and there have been no deaths naturally occurring cannabis use. So, but her husband, who was a well-respected man in this community, never got a chance. Certainly, it doesn't cure Parkinson's, but it does give you a livability that makes your life so much better. And, and I think that most patients, when they get to these stages, they can't garden for themselves and they do become prey to disreputable growers. And right now, there are only over 100 patient cards in this town. And no one's going to open up a store for only 100 clients. But these people are really taking risks for their health care. They're risking discrimination to manage their pain without opioid usage. And in some cases, they're reaching for miracles. They're reaching for tumor-reducing miracles and for seizure-stopping miracles. And they have cards that are signed by our local doctors in the hospitals here. They're not going to clinics, they're not going to some weird place. It's our doctors who are signing the cards and saying that this is a viable option for their patients. And I have to ask myself, how many more people would avail themselves of an option that was an over-the-counter, non-prescription, adult choice if it were here in a discreet and safe location? And these are your family and your friends. And they're suffering from Parkinson's, cancer, arthritis, menstrual pain, pain, chronic pain, migraines, scoliosis, Crohn's, and epilepsy. And I would just like to remind you in this, a lot in this appeal, to also consider that with the COIC closing, we could use a new revenue strain, stream to help the youth in our community, so.
I haven't heard for sure whether COIC is.
Well, let's hope not, let's hope not. But we are trying to create a renaissance in this community and revenue could be appreciated. So with that, I conclude my appeal to you and I'm asking the council to please consider designating the property known as the store as a place that was exempt from that rule and can be, can be used as a dispensary. Or take the time to find a place that can be used. Because I think that the citizens, not only the people who are cardholders, but people who could be cardholders or who might be sick deserve that. No, it will be commercial, because there are only, like I say, over 100 patients in this community. And no one's going to open a store with only 100 clients. So that's why I wanted to take the time to explain to you why a commercial dispensary is essential for the medical patients in this community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Anybody? You know, the thing I'd say is, we'd have to take this into a work session.
That would be great.
We would also have to go with the planning commission too.
Yeah.
Is there any way that I could be given a timeline to pass on to my friend? Because I, I'd just like to let him know what that opportunity is. You know, an opportunity exists for something good to happen in Lakeview for money to be addressed.
Can't give you a timeline?
Okay.
It depends on from one meeting to another meeting to another meeting.
Well, I would like to ask the question and I'm, I'm sorry, but I just, I, you know, right now, we are under no jurisdiction whatsoever, ordinances in our town. We approved it. And the state has statutes and I would say that we should oblige the state statutes. It's a proven industry in our state now. I don't think any of us can argue with that. We approved it as a council. And so those state statutes are well plotted out. There's no restrictions on that property. There's no restrictions on other properties being looked at by other operators who are looking to come into our community and may have cure three at one time, I don't know. But I'm sure they'll weed themselves out. And so, you know, that's.
We can discuss all that in the work session, Mike.
Well, no, there was nothing intended there. Well, I, I, I don't know that there's a need to do so. What are you speaking of?
Well, I want to know what new laws have come out.
What, there are no, no new laws? Well, if you haven't studied those up, you should have. Because you're the mayor of a community that has those laws in effect.
I will be there.
You're in a state of Oregon that has those laws in effect.
Excuse me, but Mike, what I'm thinking about anyway is that when we opted in, then we set certain parameters for that.
For medicinal only.
Yeah, for medicinal only.
The state changed the law again. We have a new OLCC ordinance. We were under Oregon Health Authority.
Yeah, but if you'll remember, every week, the stack of changes.
Sure, and the state changed it on us, that's right.
They just kept growing.
We opted in and the state changed it.
I think, I think we have to look at it to see what it, what it means.
Look at what? What do you need to look at?
Well, it doesn't meet the standards we set and yes.
There are no standards set. The state of Oregon has statutes. Lakeview has no standard set for OLCC operation.
Maybe we need to look at that before we say.
You don't agree that the state of Oregon knows what they're doing?
Uh, no, I don't agree the thing they're doing.
Why are you a councilor in the state of Oregon? You're under state regulation. State statute governs.
Obviously, in our county, we're in this world.
There is no county jurisdiction in the town of Lakeview.
People who are not.
There is no jurisdiction of the county over the town of Lakeview. That's a totally separate issue.
No, I know that.
So. So why are we holding up industry? That's what I want to know. We agreed for economic development in this community. And now we're shunning people that want to come in. Don't we have other requests?
I don't know that we shouldn't.
We have other requests, people are ready to come in today.
Look at it.
They want to get an application in now.
So I would like to just have a clarification on process real quick. Couple things. First, first you mentioned 1,000 feet. From my understanding, that's only from schools.
I was told parks.
That was, that was the medicinal rules and I, it was only 500 foot. I think, I'm thinking it was only 500 foot from. Was it 1,000?
And that really eliminates, I mean, it's also designated every, that it should be in the downtown area, I believe.
Yeah.
And so it really eliminates every place that, I mean, it does eliminate. I don't know if you thought about that when.
And what about the 4-H extension office where there's kids there doing 4-H?
It's not governed by state.
I'm just asking.
State statutes has no governance over any institution other than those that are on the state maps. And they are available there. And they'll tell you plainly what areas you can locate in. You cannot locate in residential areas. I think you requested that.
Well, I actually, I thought, I thought we weren't on the agenda. I apologize for that.
But it can be done. The state statutes control. So I, I don't know why we're still dithering around with an industry that's proven itself in our state and we approved it long ago in our town.
So, so again, going back to the process question, do we have an application process to, to, I mean, OLCC obviously has a process and then we'd have a luck statement that we got to sign up on, saying if it's okay or not.
No, that's all that's needed right now.
So.
But it does need to go through planning as well, I believe.
Well, not if, if we haven't done time, place, and manner, I don't believe that's the case. I mean, and maybe I'm wrong.
Time, place, and manner has nothing to do with the, unless we set up jurisdictional situations where we're running into variances with the state. That's the only thing we would do, is vary with the state. Then we get into all the complications and we become unreasonable. And that's what we were in the present medicinal. There are no locations to locate one, as you've found out.
And this is a person who is willing to come in and, I mean, to buy that building, you can't finance it because there's so many structural issues and so old. Who's come, you know, willing to save a, a piece of history. And I thought it was a, a good location again, because it's right next to an already regulated facility that's regulated by the OLCC and near the sheriff.
So we need clarification on a couple of points, I think. First, the 500 versus 1,000. I mean, and I don't know how you can vary from that, is what you're saying.
No, there, in the state of Oregon, there is no variance per parks. There is no setback for parks, only schools.
Ben, can I just add?
It's.
It's actually Lakeview verbiage.
That's, that's, not everybody speaks at once, please.
I guess, Mike, can I have a question? Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Is it, is it, I'm just confused. And I want to understand, is it Lakeview verbiage? It is Lakeview verbiage, but without the 1,000.
No, it's only in the medicinal ordinance.
Oh, okay.
There was, there was a setback for parks in the medicinal, but we no longer have that.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you.
I have been talking with a tomater. And I did research of what other cities that have allowed marijuana in, you know, this. And we are planning a work session next Tuesday to discuss what we need to change in our existing, if it, if it is, because, because it, everything that the town passed mentioned medical marijuana. That means the state has approved the recreational, that we need to make some changes. And so I have already been working with the town attorney. We will have a work session and tentatively scheduled for next Tuesday at the same time to discuss what changes we need to make to make sure that we have what we need.
And that's not a public session, that's a work, closed work session.
It's open, all our meetings are open unless we have an executive session.
So next Tuesday?
Yeah, unless I'm, unless we don't have it, but that's the plan.
That's fair enough. That's soon enough. I just don't feel that we should prolong it. I don't see a need when it's a proven industry and our state statutes are governed businesses such as that. We don't tell the liquor store, you can locate here or there. Why should we tell the same type of substance provider that you can locate here versus somewhere else?
And that was my concern when I talked to the attorney.
That's unreasonable.
Because of the recreational being, you know, people were ours, made it just for, you know, the medical. That, it didn't work together, so we are going to have a work session.
Well, next Tuesday, we'll have a work session and we'll find everything else in.
Yeah. So I need your number.
I, I just want to say, it's not my intent to create conflict. I just want to work with the council.
You are creating.
No conflict.
Fair enough.
Okay. Let's move on. We have the Skip Thornton Memorial discussion here. How, how do we really want to name? I would like to have a bunch of pictures of Skip in here. I noticed after, we've got some of Bob. We need to get some of, some of our other past mayors, if we've got them.
I believe I have found two other pictures, but they need to be redone. Like, not redone, but.
Reconditioned.
Reconditioned, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. It's been an issue because I don't even know how many years old Skip Thornton was mayor.
I think it was 28 years.
28, 30 years or something like that. And, and I don't mind recognizing that. I did from the very beginning think we cannot rename the town hall the Skip Thornton Hall because nobody's going to know what it is.
Right.
But we talked about taking our council room and naming that. And maybe there's some way that we could do a Skip Thornton.
Dedication?
Dedication for this room. I don't know what we call it, that we have to do a little namesmithing there. But, and then you could have his photo here and then you could have Bob Alger and who was the post office man who was?
Orla Lake.
Orla, thank you. And, and we've had Mike Patrick for several years and we've had some of these other, Arlene Clark. If we want to include all of them, do we want to say only people who've served this many years or more? But I think, I think it needs to be his hall perhaps, his, his marquee.
Room.
But I think we also need to pay homage to some of the other refining people we've had. And I don't know that you can draw a line, so probably needs to just, like, you know, the past exalted rulers and the Elks, line them up and be done.
So there was lots of discussion on this. This is definitely my business idea. I would, I would prefer that the actual room that they met in, because this was part of the manager. I don't know if we met in this room per se, it's all been over where we used to be, right? So I would, I wish, I'd prefer that it be that room. And then put up all the pictures in there and, you know, keep this room strictly a business. And that's just how I'd prefer it. And then just delete this as a council chambers.
Mike?
I remember and recall the discussions that we had and they never culminated because, well, we've made changes even since and we were in the other room. As far as naming a particular room, I, I like the idea and we discussed it in those meetings at that time in honoring all of our past mayors and those who had served our community so well. I, I know that Mayor Thornton, as a councillor for a long time and then as mayor, did an awful lot for our community and I certainly respect that. But I think that there were others who should be recognized as well. And so I, I don't know where in our building, we're kind of limited, but perhaps a memorial room or something. And I certainly can't push Roberta out of her office. I think it's great that she's, she's got an office where it's located at and it needs to be right in the midst of all of our operations. And so, but I, I do feel that there is a need. And I think that if we're missing pictures of past mayors, perhaps if we go back to some of the families, we can come up with those or recondition photos. But as far as the naming of, and I said that at the time, I, I think this will always, in my mind, be better off as Lakeview Town Hall, not Skip Thornton Town Hall.
not Skip Thornton Town Hall or any other person's Town Hall. I'm not just picking on Skip Thornton or, or anyone else. But that's my feelings in regards to that. I think there are an awful lot of caring people for our community who devoted a lot of time, other than Mr. Thornton, but him as well, that deserve recognition, and we should look at that more in depth. And perhaps if we can, you know, I don't think we should need to delay it for any reason. I, I push others to not be delayed, so that shouldn't be delayed either. But that's my comments.
May I please suggest something? What about behind the front desk on the wall? You can move those pictures around to where, right by the candy machine, and use that wall right behind there, because then everybody that comes in can see it.
And then, and now, all I'm saying is, I don't know the history of how long we're meeting and all past councils were meeting in what is your office now. But if we just still named it, I think it'd be fine. And if people want to poke their hand, that's totally fine and appropriate. I mean, want to come take a picture. Now, there's not a whole lot of purpose behind it other than recognition. So if you put it right, the entrance to the old chambers of your office, I think that'd be fine. I would prefer that than, yeah, causing confusion by.
The office lobby walls is what.
Yeah, exactly. And then putting all that stuff in there.
You may have to move around. I know you've got things in there.
And there's still.
Not you, not you. I'm saying that may have to move around the room.
There's hopeless.
If there's any wall space that you, you know, I don't know. I'd have to look at it again, because I know you make changes out there.
And I'm hoping that there's still a vision for this room to spruce it up a little bit, like, and Board of Commissioners. Obviously, we've got to find some money for that.
I want, yeah, I'm going to go and take some pictures of theirs and go down to the school.
Can we, can we ever get a closure on this? I'd love to make a motion to, to name the old council chambers, the Skip, Skip Thornton Memorial Hall. Is that the appropriate name, or is that something you guys want to go on?
I, I think we're, the, the problem is, is that I really like the idea of all the photos there. But then you have this private office, really, I mean, open to the public and an open door policy. But that's really the private office. So I don't like naming that. I do like doing the memorial with them, with the.
Do the Skip Thornton Hall of Fame. Just like the, you know, just something or Skip Thornton and past mayors or something.
About mayors. You know, like Mayor's Hall of Fame. Or, like Mayor's Hall of Fame. But we could, you know, on this wall right here, if we did it here too, that would be another place to roll up the screen, you know? The thing is, is that, okay, so we'll tell you how old I am. That, your office used to be the county library, the town library. So it wasn't always a meeting.
That's what the fire department thinks.
Okay, nobody giggle about how old I am over there. But yeah, that was, that was the library. And so it's not always been the, the meeting.
Where was Skip's, I mean, who, I mean, where was the meeting where Skip?
I was in high school. How would I know? I probably had trouble finding a school. I mean, I don't know. Yeah, I don't know where they met then. I honestly don't.
Okay, well, we can still work on this.
There is a motion.
I, I don't know. Do you guys want to make a decision now? But that's fun.
I mean, it's been six months since we last talked about this, and I don't want to talk about it anymore personally. We talked about it about 10 minutes now. I mean, I think we just need to name it or not name it and make a final decision once for all. And I think, you know, it's, thank you for that history lesson. And Mike told me, it's just, you know, beg for the fire engine or something too. There's a whole lot of, you know, past.
We used to be the one with the stairs.
One memorial hall, whatever you want to call it, let's do it. And, and honor all past people, that's fine. I mean, I've always wished that there was a beginning to end list of everybody who served. Not whether it's a month, a day, whatever.
Well, you know, that, that right there in itself would pretty much make it if you, if you. I, I don't know how many mayors we've had in the history of Lakeview. But if you had a plate or a recognition of each one, or a picture, photo of each one on the wall and their time there, Mr. Thornton's going to realm. I mean, he's, he's going to be there more than anyone else and by bar. So if he, I don't know.
Maybe you weigh it like, you know, for years of service, the, the name is bigger and bigger in a week, two months.
I hate to point this out, because it sounds like it's being petty, and it probably is. But we really had two people who requested this.
Right, that's, that's true.
I mean, when you get down to it, two people, one who will support any cause for Lakeview and one who is a family member. So it's not been a groundswell, you know, thing. So I, and I think we could easily just say, look, this is what we've decided to do. We hope you're happy with this. He's recognized to be the mayor with the most time and.
Are you sure?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, he had 28 years, I think it was, that he served. Yeah, it's, it's a phenomenal amount of service. And I, like I say, him and others.
I think the only person maybe who served longer was, and I'm not sure about this either, but Ray Harlan was on the council for 30 years, maybe. I don't know how long. So, but I think, I don't like renaming anything out there. I wouldn't, it would be a token effort if we did it here.
For the wall of recognition, I think is very deserving.
The wall of recognition I like.
Past mayors. All past mayor.
You can't be a memorial, because some of you aren't dead yet.
So what did you say when you said that?
Neither is my, neither is Arlene.
I was going to get some good pictures of him.
Back in the day too, there were strong mayors. So they were doing a lot of the day-to-day function.
They didn't have.
And that is certainly why, you think of 28 years, it's not coming to a couple of meetings a week and, or a month.
Day-to-day.
It was major day-to-day operations.
Plus, he was also the drug store.
Yeah.
He did prescriptions. He ran the stores.
So if we want to call the wall, can we, can we just close this?
Mayors.
Mayors Hall. Mayor's Annex.
Mayor's of all the Hall of Famers.
Or something. Where we're at. Whatever we decide to put it.
Okay. I like it in here itself.
I like the outside log.
I don't like it in here.
I like, I like.
I like the outside log.
Don said it well. Everybody's going to see it there.
Yeah.
And that's the only reason I would do it.
Mayors.
Yeah, we don't have.
Yeah, just right around the utility.
And the entrance to the building, that.
Now, we don't have to name it.
No, it's just, it would start a recognition war. But, yeah, I mean, if, if they're.
All right, so we all agree out there?
Yes.
Out there.
Okay. Settle.
Yeah. Go first.
Okay, let's get on.
Oh, should we?
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, let's, let's move on. We've got more here. We've got a letter here from Mike Beeson. Um, he said they have $2,500 and $750, but they wanted, wish they had some money to it. But I don't see how we can right now, because we're still working on budget. But I guess they're basically asking us, you know, do we want to put in flower pots or want to put in benches or, or what? Or should we just leave it up to, um, up to Mike and his group or the LCP or, or what?
I think this just needs to be tabled for now, and we can discuss it later. Or we don't know.
I don't think financially we're in a position to take on.
No.
So in, I, the last meeting, you had stated that he had told you that he had 1,000?
Yeah, then he come back and that's.
Okay, I just, I, I was.
So I don't think he knows exactly what he did have.
If during budget time we want to talk about this, let's just make a note to talk about this.
Okay. Let's move on to the other one. And there is, uh, asked permission to close East Street for his, uh.
Maybe not.
You occupy East Street like you had in the past.
We did give that prior to the last meeting. Few months ago.
If it's missing, we agreed to it.
Yeah, we just included this. I don't know why, but we did approve that, or the council did approve that.
Okay. Move on. Hey, Will, you have a letter, request for funding?
And it sounds like you still need to go through your budget process. But yes, Lakeview Community Partnership is requesting funding from the town. 5,000 in total, 2,500 of which goes to our general operations, covers insurance, office rent, things of that nature, so that we can keep moving forward and honor projects. The other 2,500 would go towards the rarest, the rare participant for next year. Their primary projects are going to be working on the Alger Theater, moving that forward. We have made a lot of progress this year, but it's to, to do the due diligence and make sure that we've got a solid business plan so that when we purchase it, it stays open. It's going to be a multi-year. We're hoping to open in 2019 on that. The other major project they'd be working on is in conjunction with the, or in partnership with the Lake County Chamber and also possibly the town, working on a community branding project. So doing a number of workshops and, and listening sessions to help identify a brand for the community that, that helps tie the community together and energizes folks to, to doing some more community reinvestment and revitalization work in the downtown, especially in the downtown area for the partnership, but also throughout town in general. So that's the, the brief version of it.
So in the past, we've agreed to the money at 2,500. We had that in the budget.
Five, because we did 2,500. These doubles that rare. So it was 5,000.
It was always 5,000?
I don't know.
Now, the original was 2,500, and then they came back for additional funds. That, that had nothing to do with the rare students, the, the initial 2,500. But then the rare student came, the request the last time, and so.
And that's what I remember. And we, we discussed at that meeting that it was in the budget.
Yeah, we had it.
So is it in the budget still for this?
Well, we don't have, no, it's not. We, we use that.
This would be another item we need to discuss.
Yeah.
Yeah, during the next fiscal year. Okay, so thanks for the request, and we'll talk about that. And I appreciate the work, and I look forward to seeing the theater reopening.
Yeah, I just wanted to be available if you guys had any questions.
I, I, can I ask some questions? And I, I'm sorry that I'm not up to date on the partnership's endeavor to purchase the Alger Theater.
Absolutely.
I didn't know that that was taking place. Is there a price? Is there, I mean.
So we're, we're not at the.
You're asking us for money, and then you're going to go purchase a theater?
We, so, fair enough. Um, no, we, we are not at, we haven't gotten a price. We haven't started fundraising for it yet. We're still in the due diligence phase. So doing market analysis, developing a business plan. We're going to, we want to get all of that, all of those ducks in a row first before we start negotiating a price, because that'll, that'll impact what we can actually afford going forward. Part of the reason we're asking for the funding now is this planning process puts us in a, makes us more competitive for outside grants and other, and low-interest loans and other funds from outside of, of the area. So we're, we're trying to leverage the, the local investments and keep the local investments small and leverage them by, by doing, using local funds early and then going to outside investments later on. If that explains where we're at.
The, the other thing that concerns me is, okay, the partnership purchases a movie theater. Who's going to work the movie theater? I, and this is the, this is the main goal of the partnership, is to open, I mean, to, I mean, that's, I'm sorry. I'm asking for.
No.
By reason why, that's the main endeavor of the partnership when it's Main Street. It's Lakeview and not Main Street Theater. I don't, I don't know. I, I don't.
So it is, it is one project that we're working on currently. We are, we are working on several others. Um, there tend to be smaller, things like the White Lights Campaign. Um, we still have the, our, our events, like Festival of Trees and Daily Days, which bring people downtown. So we still, we're still doing all of those things. Um, when we actually purchase, one of the things we're looking at is, we will have a dedicated, we have a dedicated committee for the Alger. And so they, they take on the role, responsibilities of operate, operations. Um, but that may also spin out to its own nonprofit, similar to the nonprofit that runs the Niles down in Altara's. Um, there, there is, there are plenty of historic theaters around that, that are run and operated by nonprofits.
No, I'm well familiar with the.
Yeah. I'm, yeah. But, yeah.
That's why I don't see it working either.
Yeah, there, there is, if, if it stays in LCP, LCP will have to grow. Um, and that Alger Committee will be the primary.
Well, especially with the hurdle of no price. I mean, that's, that's the thing. If, if you don't know what you're, but yet you're stating that you'll purchase it next year. And that's scary to think that an organization is moving forward with the lack of knowledge about something of that magnitude.
So when I say that we're going to purchase, that is the hope, the plan. But that is contingent on us doing all of this, all the planning upfront. That's why we haven't, we haven't made an agreement to purchase. We haven't, there's nothing contractual in, in place. This is us saying, we think that by this time, 2019, we will be, we will have been able to purchase, done the restoration work that is necessary, and open. Um, that's an optimistic timeline, definitely, but that is our goal currently. We want to make sure that people recognize that we're not just doing all of this stuff. And then we're going to, we're committed to this. But we haven't signed any contracts or anything of that nature. It's, we're, we're, we're still assessing it and making sure that this is actually a feasible project.
When the organization first started, I, I attended many of the meetings, and then it, uh, it started lacking information. I, I worked at a family on the radio station and received nothing from the partnership as far as any endeavors that you have whatsoever. So I just was wondering, I've had forwarded emails from the manager, who is a board member, but I'm wondering how you disseminate, how you work with the media, the local media, and, and how you tell the people of Lakeview what you're doing. And this is all a lot of news to me. I don't think you disseminated this until you brought this to us as far as purchase and what have you, so.
That, that's a fair, I mean, especially with the Alger, we haven't been disseminating that information because we are in, so far in the early, the planning stages. You can obviously tell if we say 2019, well, we're going to purchase. People think we have a contract, and then if we come back and, so part of it is simply that we haven't, we haven't been sharing that information because it's, it's too nebulous.
I'll accept that. I'm sorry. I just.
But I, I also take to heart that we could be doing a better job with disseminating information in, in general. So I appreciate that.
And I, I appreciate the, the theater and reopening of the theater. I am a member of the Lake Arts Council. We've utilized it a couple of times in the last year. And, you know, it has many needs as far as fulfilling arts council. I mean, there's no dressing rooms and what have you.
Yeah.
And so it's lacking in that regard. But those things can be worked out, I'm sure, in the future. I'm glad to see that you're working on that project. But I really feel that the Lakeview Community Partnership as a Main Street organization should be a little more well-rounded, and that's just my own personal preferences. I don't think it should be all directed towards a theater.
And it's, and it's not. But, yeah, understandable.
Perhaps dissemination more information.
Exactly. That's, that's, yeah. I appreciate that.
Okay, you got a comment? Okay, we'll move on. We've got the Regional Solutions Team Priority Update. You guys actually looked through that?
Looks as though many of our projects here in our neck of the woods are centered around Red Rock.
Yeah, that's.
And I am praying that that still happens. I don't know where that's at. Haven't heard it.
Well, last time when I talked to the commissioners, they said Red Rock, they were, with the new transition in the government, that there was some things that they had to go back and change. And now they're waiting on to hear back to that. change, and now they're waiting on to hear back from that. But he, when I talked to Brad, he said it might be close to the end of this year, first part of next year, before they break around. So...
Is Red Rock releasing any information to the town of Lakeview, or is it just restricted to county now?
No, we have a call once a month.
Okay. So you think the county's deserving of...
Right. And so I'm on those conference calls. And what they, they have said, they invested, you know, up to ten million R V on this project. But it's, they can't get the municipal bond unit yet, and without that, we don't know where it's going to go. And so this, and the state hasn't authorized, like, the, they had to match seventy-five-thousand dollars. It was a special public works fund, and, and that would be for the employees that they have to have. So at this point, the state hasn't authorized that money yet, so we're just, we're moving forward as far as, you know, the town itself has the, the award of the grant. We have a contract. We haven't signed the contract. We haven't gotten it yet. I just sent that over to Jeff to review. And we will be looking at that, preparing to get everything signed and ready to go, but there is a stipulation in the contract that they have to, you know, come here, do this before, you know, it goes into effect. And there's a timeframe, so.
Well, I agree with you, C F A, on that. I just noticed that so many of the regional solutions teams' items are for Red Rock in there.
They are pushing it big time, which is good, because we need it. We need economic development here. So, you know, we're, the town is working on everything we need to in order to be there and ready, so it's just, it's waiting.
It's processed. All right, thank you.
Okay. Now, the swimming cleanup, mind that they need volunteers, they need volunteers. Now, we just got school kickoff. When I talked to Amy, she told me it was the first weekend in June, and then, I don't know, I've got something else to come up with.
I don't know if we can really talk about this a whole lot if we don't have a pool manager and everybody else in place, so.
Right.
Can we table this for the next work session?
You bet.
Yeah, we, at this point, we have, we have two candidates for pool manager, one of whom I think is very viable, and the other one doesn't have the experience, but one person is, I think, very well qualified, plus is older. He's not an eighteen-year-old. And we have two, possibly three, people who would qualify as a pretty good assistant manager. Where I think we're lacking right now is, I, I don't have any idea, how many employees have we had in the past approximately? Twelve, fifteen?
Twelve, fifteen.
Right now, I think we're at seven or eight experienced people who want to come back. But that doesn't give us the numbers we need for, to staff the pool and the kiddie pool. So we need to get those, but I think we're okay for many, frankly.
So if you guys are working on that and you're going to make a decision, that's great.
So there's time.
The recruitment part is concerning, especially again when we've talked about the short season. You know, I don't know who the A are, but if they can recruit some of their friends who know how to swim and would be wanting a summer job.
Well, maybe we should have a front-page article on the seminar.
We don't have employees. How are we going to run a pool? That's only going to set us back further. We're not...
The usual seven or eight new employee applications.
Well, we're not running it again. Or it's still in the...
I've been running it.
Yeah.
I don't know if we can put a flyer, I mean, typically, these are high school students, so if we need to put a flyer down at the school...
They're announcing it over the intercom.
At least nobody listens to.
Interesting.
Well, we don't read anything on the walls either.
So, but, just timeline-wise, if we do it in our next meeting in May, the, the timeline for the team, swim team, is the first of June, is that kind of when they're needing it?
Well, their first meet, when the school ends.
Not till the fifteenth.
But they need to be able to swim before that.
What's the first meet, is that?
Fifteenth.
Well, the fifteenth is the last day of school, which is a Thursday, and then there's a meeting in Primeville, I believe, on the seventeenth. So it's like, how are we going to even get the team ready? And then, and then there's one, right? The week after that, and the week after that, and then there's a break, and then there's two more, so it's like...
So when, when during that last week or so of school would swim team members be able to practice? Like after school?
Yeah, that's, that's the question, like, even before or after school, yeah. So, I mean, right now, there's...
There could be limited time maybe opening for, for the...
We have a solid eight already trained people that could run that.
I don't know how much the swim teams was in. I haven't seen the numbers, but just knowing how many families participate in that, I would say the majority of the season passes are bought by...
Oh, yeah, I'm sure there's a large amount of them.
You know, the swim team members, so, you know, they're, well, half, maybe? I mean, I would, I should have said majority, but around half, probably.
Your swim team members, yes, they all do get their passes, but then you still have quite a few out of the community that get it.
Oh, yeah.
They come to buy them, but swim team's only ninety.
Ninety members?
You're out, yeah, it's ninety bucks. You look at the out-of-town, the people that pay, because you guys already pay for pool stuff. When you go, you guys pay, what, one sixty-five for swim team kids or something like that?
They pay the person who's on duty during...
Yeah, so that's what that's for. So then your ninety dollars is for your pool pass. It's two hundred and fifty dollars for a family's season pass. So it's all going to equal out, but it's all, the seat, what you guys pay with the one sixty-five and then the ninety, it kind of all equals out in the end.
The, the other issue I think is just finding time. We do have, if we can get a commitment from the seven or eight, I can't remember, people who have re-applied for this year to take on, because you cannot have swim team practice without a licensed lifeguard or two. You've got, you know, how many, how many kids did you guys have last year? Was it seven years ago? Was that a bunch? So I think we, if we can talk them into it, we could start early. But how many of those kids who are going to be swim team are also track?
Maybe right, right up to the end of school.
The high school kids will, but the baseball's done before.
We'll have a chance in the work session, what, next week? Is that, have a dual work session?
We should know next week where, where we need to. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
What's the earliest possible date?
What's the earliest possible date you can get it ready to open it?
I can open it in two weeks.
Tomorrow?
Is, is the pool, is the pool warm enough?
It's never going to be warm enough.
Oh, yeah. But I mean, is there a, is there a too-early date? I mean, when is it opened at the earliest?
Well, you can't wait till it stops snowing, because it never stops snowing.
Well, I'm just saying that the last week of June is way too late. I mean, after school's out is too late, in my opinion, but...
Could you do a Friday night kickoff party in the evening?
A kickoff party is not so much important. We can, we can, I think the kickoff party would never be long.
You can have swim team for two weeks before your kickoff party.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, this way you still have your kickoff party.
Accommodate the swim team, if at all possible, through employees that we have enough that's dependent on all that, but we can, maybe we'll have more employees next week than we ever will.
Karen, did you have something?
I just wanted to make a comment on Aaron Zmuyo. You're representing both the Saturday Market Association and the St. Patrick's altar Society, and both organizations are very interested in participating in the, the pool opener. The altar society made tacos in a bag last year, and that was a real hit, and the Saturday Market Association would love to be involved as well, having those.
So you need a date from us.
We, like, we have actually. I understand.
Do you have a number? No. What is your number, Karen?
Do we have anything else?
Zero, six, three. Thank you.
Okay, well, adjourn the meeting at five nineteen?
Didn't have mayor counsel update.
Oh, I didn't even see him on here.
There, on there, there's the last thing.
Oh, I did. I missed him. I'm sorry.
I'm here watching baseball, just like I do.
All right. Counsel. Mike, you have any?
No, I don't have any.
Darwin?
I attended the Regional elected officials meeting on Wednesday, coming on a dual role, let's say. It was excellent for me on all levels of involvement in the community, so it was one for the last week. Appreciate going out, and I think we brought back some materials to share with the folks, so. It was good, it was well-written.
Yeah, everything they discussed is in that book. Basically word for word, yeah.
Perfect.
Okay.
Karen? I wanted to remind you, and you already did, about the cleanup on Saturday, which , you know, it's going to be, you know, you see a lot of people out there working. I attended a U-Pick meeting. It's interesting, U-Pick, they're looking for a new name, but it is a coalition of all the different groups and agencies that deal with our citizens' well-being, whether it's mental, physical, emotional, just getting enough food to eat, you know, it's all those organizations. So that was pretty interesting. I was asked about pool passes for some of their clients, and I said we certainly were willing to offer that again, but, but frankly, we might be in budgetary issues, so I, I could not tell them, you know, the extent that we would offer that or how we would do that, but we would honor that to some degree. We had a lovely chamber open house on Thursday. Several people in the community came, got to see our newly decorated chamber, front room, and, and meet our two really great employees. The other thing that I did is that I attended the commissioner's meeting last Wednesday because the commissioner sent a letter to Lake Rail terminating their services as of April thirtieth. So that ought to be really interesting people, because we go, we all know, if that railroad goes down, we can kiss Red Rock goodbye before anything else happens. That is, that's, that's a huge thing. I don't know what the issue is exactly, except that Suzanne Stewart and I both went and talked and were not popular, because what we really drew an issue with is we've been on the rail, the railroad advisory commission since its inception, and we kept getting questions like, well, is it really a necessary organization? You know, I mean, why are you whining about something we don't have to do? Is what we got. And I said, well, there is a, a whole set of rules and regulations and the whole charter kind of thing, and who will be members and everything. And I said, I don't think you put those in for organizations that you don't have to have. But we have not been contacted in two years at the, at the very least for these meetings. They have been having meetings, but it has consisted of a commissioner and mostly the users, who I think have complained about costs and have somehow come up with the concept that Lake Rail has not done its job. And a real item of contention was that one of the commissioners stated that he had not had any contact with the representative from Lake Rail. And we pointed out to that commissioner that he had closed his doors and refused to answer any communications with his person, so that's kind of difficult for him to have dialogue with him. We also, in many things that we ask about, we have very specific questions, we were told they couldn't talk to us about because of litigation and legal matters. The point is, they got this far without ever telling anybody that what was going on. There's been, I told you, I, we talked for more in our five minutes, let me tell you. We said, you know, the buzzword now in any kind of organization and their business that they take care of is the word transparency, and there has been absolutely no transparency in these transactions. Nobody has a clue what's really going on. And I think, in my personal opinion, I think the commissioners have acted in the best interest of somebody other than the community and of Lake Rail and of continuing a good service. But that's my opinion. The other thing that is going to be very difficult is I think they have no idea the litigation that they're opening themselves to. They have interpreted the contract in such a way that, of course, is beneficial to the commissioners and to the county. But knowledgeable people in the railroad industry do not feel that that is a justifiable interpretation. So we, the county could be facing some serious litigations in this matter. And with, and I will tell you this, we had a terrible time trying to find somebody to take over from the man in Alturas that used to run it, who was terrible. And we got Lake Rail and they saved us. I don't think we're going to find somebody who's going to take on another little short-line railroad. So, and the county has demonstrated positively that they are not capable of running it. It's a very, very complex, regulated kind of thing. There are so many inspectors and regulations and this and this and this, and you have to have knowledgeable people who are running that. So I think it's a scary thing that we could be dealing with. As of the thirtieth, I do think that Lake Rail has, or will or has filed an injunction against the interminator. But I don't know. They would not, the commissioners would not answer a specific question we asked, so...
So I don't mean to go into this too much further, but it sounds like they've made a decision, most likely consulting legal counsel, having gone to an executive session to discuss personal matters in the contract, and obviously that'd be a reason why, if there's going to be litigation, they can't discuss it in an open meeting.
Okay, I agree with you on that. That is true. We know that.
Totally true.
But this, it, it got to that point without any kind of lead-in to why they got to this point.
Well, you're talking about leading like it's something required in all contracts. I mean, if they've got, you know, someone managing the rail, which they do, Dave Berman is, you know, the county employee over that, if he's reporting to his layman and, you know, having a public meeting, you know, of executive session according to, you know, state law.
That's true.
I mean, I think, yeah, I mean, no one's going to, they can't say a bunch of bad stuff about somebody if they're thinking about terminating them. I mean, that's not how you, you know...
I, I think it's going to be detrimental.
Well, obviously, that wasn't an easy choice, is what I'm saying. If they decide, and I don't have any information, I'm just saying, anytime you terminate a contract, that's not an easy choice. Obviously, they had to seek legal counsel, possibly even CIS counsel, everything.
Their legal counsel, I don't think is well-informed about the regulatory, the regulations...
Kind of heard the opposite about how he deals with employee matters. I can really get that, other issues, maybe not so much, but...
And maybe. But anyway, it's, it's a concern.
Yeah, it's, it's definitely a concern. I share that sentiment.
Rail Service in Lakeview is very important, but I, it is the, the county's obligations to take care of the rail that's there, it belongs to them, and I'm glad that, that you are a representative and have some insight in it.
They, they don't consider us representatives.
Well, that's...
And they probably lock the door for us, too.
I have nothing to add, but Darwin and Roberta, do you have anything?
If I can, I'll go ahead.
Well, we're going to, we're going to run out of time for our next work session. I mentioned in the last meeting, I was hoping we could talk to Kathy Miles about the mentoring program and possibly donating a pool pass.
Right.
Is it?
For their, yeah.
Yeah, for their fundraiser? Obviously, we're not outwilling anything.
We did.
Oh, we have, okay, I just, okay, I wasn't, I didn't see that.
Sorry, we just...
That's perfect, thank you very much. Go ahead.
Now, that's another thing we should announce. What is it, Friday night?
It's the first Saturday of the month.
May sixth.
At the Elks. May sixth at the Elks.
May sixth, yeah.
Tickets at the door.
This Saturday, isn't it?
I know, I know.
This Saturday, so he says.
Oh, that's right.
The, the comment that I wanted to make is that the latest packet that came our way from the League of Oregon Cities, not the local focus, but the informational bulletin, has a, a very valuable tool for us to look at in regards to, and I know Roberta's forward and used some information that she had been working on already, and I just think that our opportunity is now to go ahead and move forward with the lobbyist tax that we spoke of in our meetings, and, and, you know, there's no need for delay. That's something that I think we should move forward. It's all very cleanly plotted out by the League of Oregon Cities, how a community such as Lakeview should initiate and move forward on such. So I think that maybe a work session is...
Can we, yeah, can we get some detail that to, if we don't have one, fine, and what other small jurisdictions like ours have one, and what, you know, their price? Obviously, it's a hidden tax. It's going right at the motel, and people are paying it. But we're all seeing this when we go to other communities, too. So I agree that, you know, it's not going to hurt the local citizens.
Oh, no, not at all.
People aren't going to drive past us and not pay, just because they're going to pay this extra...
They go elsewhere to pay higher, I'm sure. They go elsewhere and pay higher, I'm sure.
So it's a common practice, what's the, what's the cost, just some examples, that's all.
Six percent, thirteen percent.
Yeah, yeah.
Let me clarify, there is a tax now.
A county tax.
The county. So we're talking about adding a town tax, is that what we're, you want, you want the commissioners to split that tax with this?
No, split, it's not theirs to split. It's the town of Lakeview's lodgers tax funds that they have pretty much usurped for years and years.
Yeah, I understand that.
And it's time for the town of Lakeview to get recognition for Lakeview and not the county of, and so...
Good luck.
Well, and I did some research, and just so you know, it was 88, 89 back there, it's been a while back. The reason that the city, the town itself does not get the, the tax is because they never wrote an ordinance, you know, setting it up that way. So the county did, the town did not, and that's why the county gets the money. The town can still, you know, adopt an ordinance, I mean, we, we get that. And it's supposed to go to economic development, you know, and a portion to the, you know, some different things, which the county...
And it supports, is it the North Lake?
Well, theirs does, yeah. Theirs is broken down into three different regions, and...
I will send you all the information and read it, and then we will, I don't know about next meeting, it's going to be pretty full, but maybe the next week, work session after.
And so you will let us know for sure whether or not we do have a, I got it scheduled, May 2nd, is that right?
Yes, it is.
So work session on May 2nd is tentatively scheduled, but probably will be held, right?
Could I ask a question in regards, because I don't know, if we enacted a lodgers tax, would we have to include that in our budgeting process?
We should, if we know about it, if we're going to do it, then we should.
That's...
I mean, that's, yeah.
And also, if there's going to be less of the county, again, I'm running a heads up.
For sure.
And I have no idea what that number is.
No, we should, it should be available, we should be able to get the number, as far as the amount.
It's just a matter of work. I'll be right on that.
$50,000, but nobody distributed.
It's my salary.
Oh my goodness.
Where are you going to put that on your list?
Between 3 and 40.
All right, do we have anything else? Okay, we will adjourn...